All right, we'll call the committee meeting to order. And it looks like we have a quorum. We have three here. Mr. Cordero is on the phone. And is Mr. Springer here?
He's on the phone, yes, sir.
All right, we need to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the agenda. This is Ken Smith.
All right, Mr. Smith has made the motion. Do we have a second?
That's Burns, all second.
All right, Ms. Burns has seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we would have to do a, since we have two virtual, we need to do a roll call.
Yeah, you're right, we need to do a roll call.
I apologize, sir.
Yep, you are correct. All right. Let's start, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Mr. Springer?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Cordero?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, strategic planning. Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I like being the guinea pig. I'm going first, so I'm assuming I'll do this, I'll do this best I can. I have organized the strategic planning committee items in order of consent or proposed consent agenda, action, and then the final item is proposed for information. The first three items are linked. We are looking to improve the Cape Fear Middle School football soccer complex to mirror the same platform or design as Surf City Elementary, Middle, and Penderly School. The first item is the bleacher purchase, which would allow them to have home and a small visitors' bleacher for the soccer and football complex. The next item was the concrete work, which would be sidewalks along with a platform for the bleachers to sit on. And the last one is a construction, deconstruction of a gravel parking lot to allow the parents to park closer to the facilities instead of parking at the front. And of course, those of you who've been out there for an athletic event see the cars parking all over the grassy areas in the back of the school. Are there any questions or concerns regarding the proposed consent agenda items, consent agenda items for Cape Fear Middle School?
Mike, who's gonna, um, who's gonna, this Brent, uh, who's gonna maintain this gravel parking lot?
It would be our team, sir.
Do we have a plan in place to keep the majors up on this?
Yes, sir, we have the machinery and we have excess stone at our operation site, which we use to take out to the schools that have other gravel areas.
Okay, so, uh, what about, uh, what about stormwater? Do we have to work with stormwater impeding on the gravel parking lot, pushing the gravel out into other areas?
No, sir, not based on the conversation we've had with the inspections team.
Okay, that's all I have.
Oh, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Will it be close enough for like, the other day, there was an event going on at Cape Fear.
Yes, sir.
Is it close enough to be used for like, any additional parking if something's going on?
There would be additional parking, they could enter the rear of the building, yes, sir. It would be on the right-hand side. For those of you that are familiar with the campus, I apologize for not having them out, but I'll have that for the board of, board packet.
Building this off to the right.
Yes, sir, as you drive around to the new driveway for the student drop-off, it's that field to the right. It's been, open field currently used by the Rocky Point Footballito rec group.
Okay, good, thanks.
And we've been in conversation with them too. We have a great community partnership with them and we want to continue that. So we've arranged for them to allow them to relocate for the time being until that field is fully constructed and ready for play.
Okay. Right. Any more questions about the parking lot? All right.
The next item, um, we currently have fourteen of our service vehicles that have over 200,000 miles and six of them are actually over 250,000. Our request would be to have this item added to consent agenda, which would be the purchase of one plumbing truck and one electrical truck. They, they would come with the service bodies. Our original projected cost was $134,000 when we submitted our planning budget. However, the prices have come down thankfully. And the request would be to add this to the consent agenda for $118,911 to be purchased off state contract. Any questions?
All right, you want to get any questions on that? Uh, next item, chiller, I guess, yeah.
The next item is the Cape Fear Elementary and Middle School chiller repair request. We've done some exploration. We have a barrel that is leaking and causing us issues being able to maintain the facility, especially during the summertime. The repair of the chiller itself is significantly lower than the replacement. And, and, you know, you're talking 156 to 200,000 dollars to replace the chiller. We do have three quotes. Our proposal would be to add this to the consent agenda for $36,129.54. Please be advised, this is not the lowest bid. The lowest bid is actually a vendor that we have removed from our approved vendor list due to complications with our finance team in the past. They did submit a proposal, but we would prefer to use the next highest bidder, which would be Pleasant Air.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Who, what is the average lifespan on these chillers?
The proposed lifespan on equipment of this nature is 20 years. This chiller is currently seven years old. And that, again, is another reason why we would like to just submit to repair it at this time.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor, will you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, what kind of, uh, what kind of repairs is gonna be, need to be made?
It's a, um, it's the barrel, I can't remember the exact terminology. The heat exchanger barrel needs to be reconnected and the, um, the piping needs to be rewelded. It started to separate at one of the seams.
Okay.
And, Mr. Taylor, this is Mr. Cordero, one quick question. Just wanted to know if you have the information, what the difference was in cost between the highest bid and the next highest bid, please?
Yes, sir, it's, it's just under $5,000. It's about $4,000, $4,800 difference. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, hi. You don't want?
Mr. Taylor, what kind of complications were, were with the pay system that happened the last time?
I'm sorry, sir? Not sure I understand the question?
What kind of complications was it between the finance department and the contractor?
I did not get the details on that, sir. I just know that there were issues with their billing department and our finance team. So they were removed upon prior, prior to my arrival from the approved vendor list. But I can ask, uh, Ms. Casey that information and get it to you.
Were they gonna make the same repairs as the other, the other contractor? I just, uh, $5,000 is a pretty good, pretty good amount of money to blackball them or take them off a vendor's list because of administrative problems. I'm just not, I'm not following.
I, I can just tell you that they were removed from our approved vendor list. We have an approved vendor pro, protocol and they were removed due to their failure to comply with our expectations prior to our arrival, or my arrival.
I will do some research on that and get back to you all before the next meeting.
Ms. Now, that's gonna be my request, thank you so much.
All right, so you don't have, okay.
That's, yeah, thank you.
All right. On the subject. All right, Surf City retaining wall.
When Surf City was constructed, obviously, those of you who were here know that we brought in an enormous amount of field dirt to lift the site up and mitigate the wet, wetlands that surrounded the area. However, due to opening and then the Florence hurricane, et cetera, there has been a continual battle of fighting the loss of topsoil and things of that nature on the middle school playground side in particular. With several people's recommendation, we would like to move forward with the consent item, agenda item of $40,992 to construct a small retaining wall, re, bring in a significant amount of topsoil and reseed that area prior to the spring with cold weather grasses and then reseed it in the spring with warm weather grasses in hopes of trying to prevent more loss of the playground area to the wetland area around the playground, the backside of the school.
Any more questions on the wall? All right.
All right, the next two items should be for placement of recognition markers at Topsail High School for Ms. Jan Lewis. For those of you who have knowledge of her relationship with Topsail High School, years ago, she contributed, donated significant amounts of financial funds to improve technology resources, improve athletic facilities, actually even contributed to the payment of several staff members to lower class sizes. Ms. Lewis, this, this was brought to me by members who were at Topsail High School at the time, the leadership and, and staff members. I have been in conversation with Dr. Obita. He is fully in support of the placement of her plaque, recognizing her and her contributions to the school at the front entrance. The second request is from the Annandale Alumni Association. They would like your support in the placement of a historical marker. Sample of such is in the board packet. Obviously, that's very large. It would not necessarily be that large, but I wanted you to see that it, it represents historical markers that are placed in other places. I did, I did include a, a mark, a map with a mark in the area. Those of you who've been out there recently know that there are two markers in that triangle landscaped area. This would add a third marker, but it would provide balance. One of those is an Osprey, one of them is a wooden sign for the school and this one would just be a marker on the other side of that sign. And again, I would like to request that these be added to the consent agenda at the January board meeting. Neither of these would be any fiscal obligation to the county nor the board.
Okay, does anyone have any questions before we move on?
Mike, you said neither one of these is gonna come out of the budget? Is that what, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct, sir. There will be no fiscal obligation by either request.
All right, thanks, sir. I don't have anything for them.
Sir?
All right, now down to the items that you're requesting in the action agenda, so.
Yes, sir, the next item is a network switch upgrade. Mr. Makin is here to add, to answer any specific technical questions that you might have. However, you know, I think the most important thing to remember here is that this significant amount of infrastructure upgrade does not actually impact the finances of the school system. Eighty, I think it's 80% is covered by the Federal Communications Commission's E-Rate program and the additional 20% will be reimbursed to us from NCDPI because we're using their preferred vendor in order to accomplish this task. And again, based on the cost that we will have to pay initially to request reimbursement, that is the, the reason for placement on the action agenda based on prior board agreement of dollar thresholds.
All right, any questions on that item?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, what, what does this particular item do?
It replaces all the network switches that connect our schools. Yeah, you come on. But I'm gonna let Mr. Makin be more specific.
Mr. Springer, was that you with the question?
It was.
Yeah, so these items are our network switches. They essentially live in our networking closets and connect every IP or internet-based device to, to our network infrastructure. So any outlet you've ever looked at in a, in a classroom, our wireless access points in the ceiling, every desktop computer, these are the core devices that allow for that network connectivity.
Okay, so Bennett, this is the upgrade to infrastructure. How, how long do you project we would have to do this again?
Generally speaking, we refresh this equipment ideally every five years.
And what year are we in right now?
Um, the equipment we have right now, it's coming up on year six. Actually, we're in six, we're coming up on seven.
Okay. Is there something wrong with the system that we have now? Is it causing problems or issues?
There is nothing functionally wrong with the equipment we have. Again, the purpose for the refreshing of this equipment is essentially to stay at standard with, uh, you know, the technologies around the world. You know, this field is innovating constantly. You know, five-year-old equipment is rather old equipment. This particular upgrade, you know, we're doing to gain access to higher data throughput. So right now, we have gigabit switches. The switches we're putting in will be capable of 2.5 gigabits per second. We also, our switches are what's called layer two. We'll be gaining access to what's called layer three switches. The main advantage of this is the ability to do what's called multicast traffic, which is, how do I, how do you experience this in your house? In your home, you know, you put something on your wifi and it can just talk to everything, all your other devices. It's discoverable. You've ever heard of something like, oh, I found it? That's multicast. So we actually need to be able to do that across our campuses, which we cannot at the moment. And we really can barely facilitate within our buildings. A lot of new emergent technologies kind of rely on that to just make things easier. So that's one of the things where our old switches just don't have that capability. Aside from that, it's keeping current with general security technologies. Right now, if you walk into one of our buildings with your own personal computer, you can plug it into one of those network outlets and you will effectively have internet access. I don't like that. Not only we have internet access, you could begin probing our other network devices. I don't like that either. So these switches will actually allow us to identify that device before we ever give it those next layers of connectivity. And based upon just that base identification criteria, we can say, nah, I'm not giving you anything. You know? So that is just a little rundown of some of the few features we're getting. For our technicians to have the ability, we can just hand them a piece of equipment. Using that same technology, I can go ahead and program the switch ports based upon that list and they can just plug it in and that port's already programmed. They're not calling me or Chuck to program that port and wait on us. They become much more efficient.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sorry for the interruption.
Now, the more the better.
Thanks.
Anything else?
All right, any more questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay.
The last item, again, I didn't know exactly which area to put this in based on last board meeting conversation. I had it listed for information at the moment, but we'll be glad to add it as directed by the board. In your packet, you will see that each bus that runs the Penderly routes, on the left-hand side, you see a morning route. For example, let's just pull bus 250. I have them alphanumeric sorted as well. So bus 250's morning route is 45.3252 miles. Their afternoon route is 47.3566 miles for a total route of 92 miles, 92.6818 miles per day. Those are scheduled miles per day. And then I received a list of questions from Mr. Cordero, which I would like to also add to the conversation today and again, receive direction from you exactly where on the agenda for January 9th you would like it placed. Question number one, the total range of electric buses during ideal operating conditions. Based on the conversation we had at the July 11th board meeting, it was shared by the Carolina Thomas professionals that were here that the ideal operating conditions, they are seeing a minimum of 135 miles of travel per charge. They are seeing some greater, 138, 139 miles of travel. Question number two, total range of electric buses during winter conditions, for example, 30 to 40 degrees Fahrenheit, and this includes cabin heating systems. We will see a reduction of performance approximately 100, by 10 miles of travel to 125 miles of travel. The total distance for each possible route these buses will travel, at the very least, the distance of the longest route should be provided. Again, if you look back at the route sheets, the scheduled routing of each bus is listed and on the left-hand side of the chart, you'll see the total miles traveled in a day and also broken up by AM and PM routes. Question number four, the total distance of the longest route if a double is necessary. So if you take the two longest AM routes, it'll be approximately 92.57 miles of travel. During ideal conditions, that would be a 69% battery utilization. During inclement weather or more demanding environments, there would be a 74% usage of the battery. In the PM, the, if you take the two longest routes and combine them, it would be 95.89 miles of travel. For a morning route, there would be a 71% utilization of the battery and in the afternoon, there would be a 77% utilization of that battery. Question number five, total distance of the longest route if a double is necessary in the morning, afternoon. I think I've captured that with the, the answer because I went ahead and bulked it up by AM and PM. Number six, total time needed to fully charge an electric bus, a bus from empty. Based on the conversations with the Carolina Thomas professionals and the installation of the upgraded chargers by Duke Progress, there is a minimum of three hours or a maximum of three hours from dead to full charge time. So recognizing that even if you ran a double, there would be approximately five hours that those buses would be on campus, they should have adequate time to charge. Additionally, there are three chargers planned to be installed, which would be one for each bus, even though traditionally one charger can charge two buses. Duke has agreed to install one charger per bus. That way, there's no issues or competing for the lines and things of that nature and we wouldn't have to stretch the lines further to get from, from the charger to the bus. I think those are all the questions that was asked in the email, but if there are other questions at this time, I would be happy to try to answer them and if not, I would definitely have them by the next board meeting. And then the next question is where the board would like to see this placed on the agenda for January 9th.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have the board just to ask a few questions, follow-ups, please?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor, thank you for the information. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm reading these charts correctly. So if we look at the longest route, which is route number 292, so can you tell me, so is, is the forty, is the number 47, is that the morning route? And then the afternoon route is that 48 number? Is that right or, or is there something different that that means?
No, sir, that is correct. Bus 292 morning route is 47 point, basically 47 and a quarter miles and 40 half, 48 and a half in the afternoon.
And so in the morning, if we were to need to run a double, you'd just, on, on, again, on route number 292, you'd take that 47 and a quarter and multiply it by two, so you'd have about 95 miles that would be needed to run a double on that route in the morning. Is that right?
Well, I took, I, when I calculated it, sir, I took the second longest double. So it was around 45 miles. I think that was, um, 250's route is 45.32. It's the second longest, I think that's right? Yeah, so I added 47 and a quarter to 43.35 and I came up with 92.57.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So in, in the range, the range under winter conditions, does that include the operation of the heating system?
Yes, sir, according to the Carolina Thomas professionals, that, that was the response that we received.
Have you, and, and what, in what format did you receive that response? Did they respond to you in writing?
Uh, I do have it in writing, yes, sir. I have an email that was sent to our transportation team.
Okay, if, if you don't mind, if you could forward those emails to the board, that would be much appreciated. And the reason why I ask is I, I did a variety of different research before this meeting and I'm reading reduction in battery performance when you're, you know, when you're in a winter condition and you're using, uh, you know, a heating system up to 40. And so that, you, you said about 10%, is that right?
Uh, well, 10 miles, so that sure be, yes, sir, that would be around, I think it's seven or eight percent actually, if you do the calculation. I did not do that calculation. I just know that there's a 10-mile range based on their testing.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I mean, any data that they have as far as testing data for the winter performance, including the heater, that would be very helpful. My concern is that, you know, if we have to run a double route with one of these buses, if we, if we need not, you know, if the ideal capacity is 130 miles and then if we're in winter conditions and we're experiencing 10 to 25% loss in, in battery efficiency, that we're not gonna have enough miles and those kids might be stuck on the side of the road without, you know, heat. And, and so anything that you can provide or that Thomas can provide to help alleviate that concern would be much appreciated.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to do that. But just operationally speaking, you know, we had already agreed that we would only place these buses on the three shortest routes at that school and therefore, they, they would, there would be more than ample battery life to cover the next, the gas buses, for example, that failed to run that day, their routes. But I'll get that information for you and the rest of the board members.
Thank you, and the, the additional context is also helpful, so thank you, Mr. Taylor.
The one, yeah?
Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Mr. Cordero.
All right, thanks, Mr. Cordero. Uh, anyone else have any questions on this? Okay.
My thanks, thank you.
Ms. Mallon. You have a whole stack of stuff here for us.
I know, I know. I showed it the cabinet, and they were like overwhelmed by the first budget. So, I'm gonna say good afternoon, but I guess it is morning. So, good morning, everybody. So, I'm presenting the state, the entitled, the entire budget for Pender County Schools for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, I did a short summary, because you have lots of documents in the Board Pro. So, the total budget for PCS is a hundred and forty-six million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, five-fifty, fifty-four. And you can see the breakdown of state funds at eighty-four million, local twenty-five million, federal twenty million, child nutrition five-point-five million, and grant funding at six-point-five. Some of the things that changed this year, so certified raises varied between three and ten percent, depending on where they were on that, the years of service. Uh, retirement rate went from, went from twenty-four point five percent to twenty-five point oh-two percent, and that is our retirement matching that we give every employee that's entitled to retirement. Um, hospitalization went from seventy-three ninety-seven, which that is the annual amount, to seven thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. They did some switching around of things, counselors, social workers, and nurses moved to a PRC oh-six instead of PRC oh-seven, and that was to help try to, and that was originally a psychologist allotment, so they wanted to try to put all mental health or the health service people in one allotment. What you will not see in this budget is upcoming reversion. So I wanted just to let you know, this is coming in the next budget amendment. So, um, this is something I'm not sure that Pender County Schools has experienced lately, is a reduction in our budget based on our ADM. This year, they estimated allotment from DPI was eleven thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-eight students, and our actual twentieth day was ten thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven. That is a difference of six-hundred-and-eighty-one students. So these are the categories which cause reversion based on those numbers. Uh, so we lost nineteen point five classroom teachers. Oh, wait, never mind, that's nineteen fifty whole positions, so classroom teachers were at fifteen point five, K-five was at, the enhancement teachers were at two, school psychologist slash health is one, instructional support and personnel certified is one. Those are the physician allotments that we were reduced by. The dollars reverted, these are dollar categories, a hundred thousand dollars for non-instruction personnel, um, nineteen hundred dollars in CTE program support, teacher assistance, two-hundred-and-one thousand, classroom instructional supplies at basically twelve thousand, textbooks at ninety-seven forty, with a total reversion of one-point-eight million dollars. Now, that dollars, those dollars represent what DPI says, that those teachers, what those physicians are worth to them. It could be over or under for us, because these are physician allotments, so we put our highest-paid teachers in those, in those positions. So that's an average. And that's the kind of big picture. You guys have all of the budgets in the budget resolution. Um, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Mallon? Go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
Ms. Mallon, thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Mallon, what kind of textbooks will we buy?
Actually, Mr. Springer, this is the first year that they've actually moved textbook money to more of a digital format budget code. Um, used to, you know, you used to buy the paperback textbook direct, directly from DPI, from the textbook warehouse. They are not seeing people buy those as much, so really, this is for digital curriculum.
Okay, thank you, I don't have anything else.
Ms. Mallon, this is Ms. Cordero. I was just wondering if we might be able to get a copy of the documents that you included in our agenda packet in an Excel format, so we can sort and filter that data, if that would be not too much trouble?
Um, I included all budgets in Excel format in Board Pro, if you didn't see that.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll, I'll look in there, and if I have any issues, I'll be sure to reach out to you and staff, but thank you for letting me know. I downloaded the board pack, but I'm not a hundred percent familiar with Board Pro. In any event, thank you, and I'll let you know if I can't find that information.
And just so you know, for all of you, I did do, it might look like it's duplicated, but I did PDF files, for anybody who just wanted to see the PDF version, and then I did an Excel file for every fund.
Mr. Cordero, all those files can be downloaded individually as well as Excel files. Thank you, Dr. Breedlove, I'll, again, I'll let you know if I have any issues, I appreciate it very much. Yes, sir.
And I do want to briefly mention that we went to Mr. Cordero, Ms. Burns, the superintendent, and myself went to a summit with New Hanover County and Brunswick County, was it last week? And it was really nice to have that coming together, talking about where, where the budget is, where they're putting the money, where they're not putting the money, and how to recruit, retain teachers. Um, it was really nice to come together and see that we're all on the same page, and that we need to, we need to do some discussion with, with our legislatures.
All right, Dr. Sawyer, I think the rest of this is your part.
Good morning, Board, how are you this morning? Um, so the first two items I have for committee, well, the first four items we're looking to put on to, so the first two items are, one is for a contract for an IA, an ECIA at Melfer's Corner, and the second one is for an EC teacher, a contact, a contract for an EC teacher at Burgon Middle School. Are there any questions about those two? Okay?
Do we have any more? Ms. Sawyer, Dr. Sawyer, do we have any, any extra teachers going over to Surf City Elementary or Middle?
Um, not at this time.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the Head Start Required Reporting for November and the budget. Just a couple of things that I'd like to, to point out here, the total enrollment currently is two-hundred-and-fifty-four. Their average daily attendance for the month was eighty-seven point three-seven percent. They did seventy-point-five hours of volunteer hours last, last month, and four home visits. Um, so you can see the, the budget is there as well. Are there any questions about the Head Start Required Reporting?
Dr. Sawyer, I got a question, Mr. Chair. Are we keeping accountability of the attendance when parents or, or kids that are not home when they show up?
Are we keeping, hold on, I have Ms. Poole in here as well, so hold on one second. Accountability for attendance.
Yeah, we send out letters, we call parents every single day. If a child is not in attendance, we have to contact him within the first hour of the day, and that's kind of a safety thing and an attendance thing. And we also send the same letters that the school system sends. Uh, we actually send attendance letters if you've been out one day. Every month, we send out a letter just letting you know, we're keeping track of it, so when you get to kindergarten, you know that we are being held accountable for that.
Is this going for every school, or is this just specifically one school?
Pre-K.
This is for pre-K.
Yep, so are we going for, for all the pre-Ks, or just one?
No, it's all pre-Ks, it's a requirement.
Okay. Right.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry.
Will you move on to this?
Okay, the next item on the agenda, again, for consent, is the purchase of BookNok. Uh, BookNok is a program that provides us one-to-one high-impact tutoring for our migrant education programs in grades K to eight. Um, the hours that we're purchasing from BookNok will be used for the months of January through June of twenty-twenty-four, and it's going to be paid out of PRC oh-fifty-one, which is the migrant education program. This is a program that we're currently using, and we will continue to use for the rest of the school year. Any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you.
The last item that I have on there is just an update for you on preschool and our EC, what used to be considered EC pre-K. Um, I do have a presentation for, for you, a short presentation, just to identify the differences between NC pre-K Head Start and EC services. Um, one of the things I'd like to, oh, I have a thing here. One of the things I'd like to just go over at the beginning is, um, what we used to know as EC pre-K, um, the state has actually changed that, because it is not pre-K, it is EC services. So we have, the new name for EC pre-K is ECEC, which is Early Childhood Exceptional Children's Services. Um, so it is not a pre-K program. So this is just to help you guys understand the differences, and then I'll go over the next steps as far as what we're going to be doing over the next couple of months. Um, so this is just eligibility criteria, just to kind of outline for you the differences between NC pre-K Head Start, all the services we offer to students that are three and four years old before they become school age. Um, we have private preschool, which that's individually determined, we don't really run those things. Um, we have NC pre-K. NC pre-K, you have to be four years old by August thirty-first. Um, there are, at-risk students are accepted first, and at-risk are, are students that are, are income at seventy-five percent of the state median income are lower. They have an IEP, Medicaid, and WIC. There is, there are some eligibility requirements for NC pre-K, that you can be over the income, but there are other factors that come into play as far as eligibility is concerned for that. Head Start, you can be three or four for Head Start by August thirty-first. You must be in poverty. There are other risk factors that are included, like being a single parent, having a parent incarcerated, the death of a parent, having an IEP, uh, mental health, so there's a lot of other things that, that do qualify you as well. Um, but you're given eligibility points based on all of these different criteria, and then those that have higher point values are accepted first into that Head Start. Some of the automatic eligibility for Head Start are foster homeless, receiving TANF or supplemental security, and also SNAP as well. So our ECEC services, what we used to call EC pre-K, as you're going to see referred to now as ECEC, you must have an IEP, and services can begin at the age of three, whether, whether they are, whether they qualify for NC pre-K or Head Start. So we do have EC SPA available in NC pre-K and Head Start, however, we do have separate settings, ECEC classroom services that we offer students that are eligible for EC services at the age of three. Then we also have ECEC itinerant services. You must have an IEP for that as well. Services can begin at age three, and that is for students that are in a private daycare or preschool in Pender County, or could be homebound as well. So we do have a few students that, that receive itinerant service, ECEC services in those The hours, NC pre-K and Head Start are six-point-five hours, and they run Monday through Friday. ECEC services is slightly different. It is not a daycare setting. Um, ECEC services is very individualized based on a student's IEP. So a student could qualify for five days a week, an hour and a half a day, or a student could qualify for one-point-five hours twice a week. So they get the services based on what they are eligible for based on their disability. Currently, we are running three-hour sessions, AM and PM sessions, to allow more spaces for students, and to also be able to comply with, with parent needs, whether a parent needs morning session or afternoon session, depending on, on the needs of the student and the parent as well. We do have ECEC itinerant services, those are very individualized as well, based on IEP. Um, an example to that would be, you know, one to two days per week, maybe ten to thirty minutes, the EC teacher would work with that student based on the needs of their IEP as well. I do want to just outline, ECEC services and itinerant services are based on the needs of the student and the IEP team decision. So whatever the hours are that are in that IEP is what services those students will receive based on that. Staff requirements, I just wanted to go over what that looks like for NC pre-K and Head Start. Um, the teachers have to have a birth to kindergarten licensure, um, the instructional assistants have to have forty-eight credit hours, early childhood prefer, um, and the, the, um, the ratio is about one to nine for those classrooms. Um, for ECEC services, they also have to have a birth to kindergarten licensure, instructional assistants forty-eight credit hours, but they tend to, based on student needs, be about a ratio of one to six. Um, and then itinerant services is usually a one-to-one service, because they're actually going out into a private preschool or private day home to be able to provide those services. So summary of the differences, NC pre-K and Head Start are the only options for pre, for free preschool services within Pender County Schools. Um, ECEC services is not a preschool, it is not a childcare, and ECEC services are not childcare regulated, so we can't run the same kind of program that we would run for NC pre-K and/or Head Start with those services. They are very individualized based on preschool-aged children with disabilities. Um, and another note is that universal pre-K isn't funded by the state of North Carolina, right? So we assume that. If children are ineligible, or there is no space available in the preschool, in the preschool program, parents do have the option to enroll their children in private parents do have the option to enroll their children in private preschools as well. And we do offer, uh, parents lists of those private preschools across the county that they could, uh, qualify for, for NC pre-K or even preschool, preschool services in general. Um, some of the continuum of services that we do provide, um, for ECEC, um, we provide what's considered REC P, which is regular early childhood programming. That is our NC pre-K and Head Start program. We provide EC services in there. We also provide separate setting ECEC services. Uh, we have, I think it's, if I remember, five classrooms, um, of ECEC services spread across the district. Um, we also provide EC services at the home and we provide EC services at provider locations in those private preschools. So there are four elementary schools that currently house separate EC settings. Malpas Corner, Surf City, Rocky Point, um, and South Topsoil Elementary. We do have a classroom at Cape Fear Elementary for an ECEC, um, uh, separate setting service. However, uh, we don't have a teacher yet for that classroom. So we have four functioning, uh, ECEC settings for that. We currently do have a contract with Little Town Learning Center as well and we have 13 reserved spots for EC students at, um, at Little Town Learning Center. Um, in order for students to be placed in, uh, DDC, they must have, uh, require special education for five days a week. In addition to at least three hours a day of specially-designed instruction, two hours a day of specially-designed instruction at least once a week, uh, with related services and/or at least one hour of specially-designed instruction with two weekly related services. So they have to qualify for five days a week in addition to one of the other qualifications. Um, and we currently have 13 spots there that are available. Um, and in a DDC, they're required to maintain an enhanced ratio, which is a little bit higher than what we would actually provide in ECEC services, um, which is 18 students to three adults, um, with those enhanced ratios. We currently have four students that are placed in DDC or at Little Town Learning Center. So our next step, basically, um, starting Monday, January 15th, um, we will return to a full five days for, for our ECEC services. Um, the number of days per week is going to be individualized and determined by the IEP team. So if a student is currently in four days, they're going to be reviewing IEPs for these students and then they'll be determining if they qualify for that extra fifth day. Um, typically, in, in conversations with, uh, the EC department and pre-K and Head Start, we've been having meetings together to plan this out. Um, typically, we do get an influx of students as we go into January and February after the holiday. We get an influx of students, um, for, for ECEC services, for NC pre-K and for Head Start. Um, and there are currently almost 150 on the waiting list for NC pre-K and Head Start. Just that, not even including ECEC services. Um, so we do have spots available that we can provide students. So it's really going to be based on what the student needs and what the IEP team determines in order to prepare them for school age and kindergarten. Um, so the five days per week of ECEC services will be available for students with high levels of need and multiple areas of developmental delays and/or disabilities. Um, we're planning on training admin in January at our, uh, January district principals meeting. Um, and really going over this with them so they understand what that looks like in their buildings, even though not all have ECEC services in their buildings. Um, it's, it's nice to kind of make sure everyone has the same information. Um, we do have a CPAC meeting in January, at the end of January. So we are planning out that meeting to review, um, the, the differences between NC pre-K Head Start and ECEC services then too, and also get some parent voice in what that's going to look like in the upcoming years. Um, and just interesting that we are developing a communication plan to go out to parents, um, especially going into the spring and then into next year, um, and, and what these services will look like for parents and students. Any questions? I know that was a lot. I will share the PowerPoint with all of you so you have the PowerPoint, so you can take a look at it. Um, and, and if you have questions after, I'll be more than happy to take those as well.
Uh, this is Beth Burns, um, Dr. Sawyer, thank you for all the information that you've shared today. Um, one question, um, ECEC services, how are we funding? Is that local funded?
Yes, it's, it's EC, EC funding, yes. EC, EC, EC services is funded through?
Um, through state?
Through state, yeah.
EC funded?
Yeah.
And, uh, one more question. Of those, uh, 14 position, uh, those 14 slots that we have at Little Town,
Mm-hmm.
Um, how many, what percentage of that is the entire, um, um, pre-K attendance? I mean, how, how many of those 14? We've only got 14, but how many overall positions or slots do we have for North Carolina's pre-K?
So we currently have, I know we figured out the numbers, 237. 237 spots.
Um, is that, um, I'm, I'm sorry, is that 13 or 14 positions?
It was 13 spots that we have at Little Town.
Is that determined by the state of North Carolina or is that determined by Little Town?
Uh, developmental day centers, if there is a developmental day center that is in the community, the public school cannot have developmental day. We used to have developmental day at, uh, our Cape Fear Community College Day at HEC. Um, but the state made it so if there were any that were being, um, any developmental day centers in private centers, the public school has not allowed them to.
And while I'm very grateful to Little Town for providing, um, these spaces, um, has there been any, I know Bargo is centralized, but have we considered or is there anyone else qualified to move, um, or maybe even ask these spaces as other, um, pre-Ks or private pre-Ks around here?
Um, we've even, we've even had a hard time getting private childcare centers to offer NC pre-K because they have to have a birth to kindergarten licensed teacher so that pay them more. And you never know with DDC how many kids you're going to have qualify. Um, so you could be a childcare center owner and you have a birth to kindergarten licensed teacher and only end up with one developmental day child. And that's not, that's not going to cost you enough money to pay for that teacher.
Do you know if there's any other?
And the issue has to be.
Do you know if there's any on that side of, on the other side of the county that actually have developmental day centers?
There, there aren't any other, uh, Little Town is the only one in Pender County schools, uh, in Pender County that has developmental day. Um, we've encouraged people to apply for it, but it's, it's higher childcare regulations than just regular childcare regulations. So a lot of people want to do that.
Thank you very much. Of course I have that attitude. Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All you got?
That's it.
More questions? Hold on, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Um, there we go. First item on my section is, uh, calendar update. Um, we're looking again to create calendar options for 24, 25 and 25, 26. Um, those of you that are in person have paper copies. Um, if you're joining us virtually this morning, you have copies in your board packet. Excuse me, uh, we do have a, a brief presentation, um, so I believe the online folks are being able to view as well. So as you, oh, never mind, I got the controller. There we go. Um, just a brief organization responsibilities and timeline. Um, so in your packet, you have, uh, calendars, several drafts of each type of calendar for both school years. Uh, some of the drafts have exams before January 1st. Some of them have dra, exams after January 1st. There is a draft of an early start calendar or BOE, Board of Education request. Um, the school improvement teams, uh, will provide feedback and you'll see this on the timeline on the right-hand side as well. Uh, families will also provide feedback through SIS. Um, final recommendations will be presented to the board first off in COW, the COW, and then in the February board meeting. Um, and then the dates on the side, on the right-hand side of the timeline are more, a little bit more specific. Uh, community survey conducted January 22nd through the 26th of 24. Um, again, presentation to the COW on January 30th, uh, with a recommendation for approval on February 13th. Uh, just some brief outlines about, uh, some of the, and there's links in here that'll take you to the actual calendar law. Um, but just without going through this, the most important components of this, uh, Monday, we can start no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th and those end no later than Friday closest to June 11th. Um, 215 teacher days, all the calendars have that. A minimum of 185 student days or 1,025 hours. Um, in our district, we have traditionally done the 1,025 hours. Um, so we'll go through those calendars here in a second and I'll explain all that to you. Um, all the rest of the stuff in there is pretty standard. We do have two calendars that are standalone, one is Pender Lee and one is Pender Early College. Uh, Pender Lee follows a year-round calendar and the rules for that calendar are also listed below on, on the bottom of the slide. So going through your packet, uh, these are 24, 25 first. Draft one, semester testing, um, has 79 days in first semester. Semester two has 90 days, uh, for a total of 1,046.857875 hours, which gives us 3.5 days of bank time. Uh, starts on August 26th, ends on May 22nd. Um, there are three half-days built in and we calculate those, uh, in terms of a half-day being 3.125 hours. Um, a instructional day is 6.25 hours. Draft two, you can notice that some of these, the December testing days have a discrepancy between semester one and semester two in terms of length of days. Uh, the second one, uh, draft two, December testing, uh, 79 days compared to 88 days in spring. Uh, 1.5 bank time, um, starts on the 26th, ends on the 22nd. Again, there are three half-days built into this calendar as well. Excuse me. Draft, draft one, January testing for 24, 25. Uh, you'll see the days are a little bit more equaled out here. Um, 86 days to 86 days, seven days of bank time. Starts on the 28th, ends on June 4th. There are two half-days built into this calendar. Um, the half-days are traditionally used for staff, uh, staff development. So in case you're wondering why we have staff half-days, that's the reason. Uh, January, excuse me, draft two, January testing, 87 and 88, uh, semester. Uh, 10 bank time, banked days of, 10 days of bank time. Uh, again, starts on, or 215 teacher days. Uh, draft three, testing after, testing in January with a later spring break allows us to equal the semesters out a little bit better. Um, there's nine days of bank time there. Starts on the 26th, ends on the 25th, excuse me, ends on June 3rd, 25th. Again, there's two half-days built into this calendar. And then draft three, this is the early start December testing, which this does not coincide with the calendar law. I want to bring that to your attention and public's attention too. 88 days, 88 days. Well, 2024, end on May the 20th of 2025 and we would have 11 days of bank time. You kind of see where the, the bank time, um, fluctuates by the type of calendar we're using or would propose to use. Moving on to 25, 26, excuse me. January 1, excuse me, draft one, January testing, uh, 86 and 85 days respectively. Uh, six days of bank time. We will start on the 27th of 25, end on June 2nd. Again, two half-days built in. Uh, draft two, January testing, 87, 87 days, um, 74 days, nine days of bank time. Uh, start date would be August 25th, end date would be June 4th of 26. Again, two half-days built in. Draft one, for December testing, uh, again, on these December testing days, um, the semesters get a little bit unequal. Uh, 79 and 90, uh, with 169 days, um, 3.5 days of bank time. There's three half-days built into this calendar. Uh, December, draft two, December testing, 80 and 89, not quite as out of line as the, as the one previous to that two days. Again, 3.5 days of bank time, starts on the 25th, ends on the 21st of May. There is a, uh, draft three, January testing calendar for 25, 26, with a later spring break, uh, with 88 and 88 days, 11 days of bank time. Um, begin date would be August 25th, end date would be June 3rd. And then the last calendar that we have, and this was on purpose. If you look at draft three, early start for 24, 25, there are a lot more days in there, a lot more hours in there. This, the calendars that don't follow the calendar law give you more flexibility to add dates in there. So we could easily make that 87, 88 days in the semester one and then the semester two could be close to 90, um, and still end with a reasonable amount of time at the end of May. Um, still being able to end in May typically. Um, these calendars, I believe the, I don't believe, I know the director from the board was to closely align with Cape Fear Community College calendar. Um, I am very confident in the 24, 25 calendar. Uh, even though they have not released that date for their spring break, I'm pretty confident in that being the date. Um, the one for 25, 26, the early start December testing calendar, we are making, I'm less confident about that one because they're, they have not discussed it at all for 25, 26. But following the trend, it'll either be the week that is on or the week after. There have been some calendars from, uh, Cape Fear that have gone the second week in March because the first week is like the very beginning of March. So, but we're pretty confident that those will be the same dates.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Beth Burns, um, are there any other counties surrounding New Hanover County that utilize dual enrollment, uh, like we do with Cape Fear Community College?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, yes, yeah. Primarily New Hanover County, uh, with, with Cape Fear, New Hanover County are sort of the two primary ones that use them. Brunswick has their own community college, Ogden has their own.
Mr. Taylor, this is Mr. Corero.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Corero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, cou, just a couple of questions. I, I'm looking at the, um, the PDF documents in our, in our packet and I apologize if I'm missing it. I was just looking to see, is there anywhere that it's indicated where the fall term ends? So I see the first day and last day of school and I see that, you know, on the slides that you've given, the- you've given, the, uh, you know, the, the August date and the May date, but I'm just wondering if, if it's included anywhere and maybe I, again, maybe I missed it where, you know, for example, if, if this, if the fall term were to conclude before the Christmas break, I think that might be useful to know. And so I just want to make sure I didn't miss it anywhere.
Yeah, it's list, excuse me, so if you look at draft one for December testing, twenty-four, twenty-five, if you look in the middle on December, it'll have first semester exams December sixteenth through the twentieth. You see that?
So I'm looking at draft one and I see, so in, in the bottom left where you've got December twenty, twenty-four, the little calendar there, is that where I should be looking?
Yeah, in the very middle of that document. There's a list of dates. If you look under December twenty, twenty-four.
Very good.
December sixteen through the twentieth is first semester exam.
Okay. Would it be possible? I'm just trying to think of a way that, that we might make this more visual and/or, you know, if parents are looking at it, it might be easier to, to identify. If we could maybe use another star, you know, may, maybe like a star to begin the, you know, because you've used a star, for example, on draft one, you've got a star on August twenty-eighth, right? It may be put one on the, on the last day of, of December and then maybe the first day of January and then, and then the last day in May. Does that make sense? I, I understand that because cross-referencing between, between the calendar charts and this list of dates is a bit cumbersome. That's just my, you know, if I'm the only one that thinks that, please, you know, let me know, but just some feedback to help it easier, be easier to digest for parents if they're trying to give us feedback on this.
Sure. We can, we can look at that, it's not a problem at all.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, was, uh, was any of these bank day, was any of these, uh, bank days configured to allow for the elections to be entered in the schools?
Yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to make an adjustment since the, the draft went out to you, we'll have to make an adjustment on one of the, on the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar for the November election.
On the, on the twenty-four, twenty-five, November the fifth is election day and you can see on every calendar that is a workday at county schools. So no students will be on campus during that day. That's going to be a big day, but the off-year, which is the following year, we'll have to adjust that as we, you know, this is just a draft, but we'll have to adjust that for the twenty-five, twenty-six year on, on each of the calendars because that's on November the fourth of that year.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Seth Burns, uh, one more question for you. Is there any way that three-tier bell schedule could affect these calendars?
I'm not a, I'm not aware that they would. Are you thinking of something that may come into play?
Yes, sir. Um, it was a conversation that I had with a parent not too long ago. Back in the spring last year when we were talking about this, one of the, one of the possible solutions we were talking about was actually adding days to the school year by taking away some of the days during winter break. And I didn't know of that possibility. Mr. Mike Taylor, I see you standing up right now, thank you. And I just, while we're discussing calendar, I wanted to make sure that we addressed every possible scenario that might come up.
Do you have both Taylors now, so we should be able to.
I understand what you're asking, yeah.
Yes, we have both Taylors.
Yes, ma'am. Two of the options we, we provided for the community, last time we attempted the three-tier bell schedule change did include a reduction of the time during the day, which meant we would have to use up the bank days plus add more because we don't have enough bank days to accommodate the amount of time we were moving from the bell that, to the bell schedule. So that is not part of the conversation this time at all. Our expectation is based on the feedback from our community members related to the last time we tried the three-tier bell proposal is we will not start any school day prior to seven thirty, which means we will not have to cut any of those two times either.
So each, each of those options includes a six point two five.
Correct.
Hour day, which is a normal standard day for us.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Just to reiterate steps and I think I'm, I'm holding everybody from whatever they got to do the rest of the day. Just for next steps, the January COW meeting, which will be the thirtieth, I believe, by that time, based on the timeline, we will have input from school improvement teams, input from the public, be able to make some recommendations, probably some changes to some of the calendars. And we'll bring with us through that meeting on the thirtieth, options for you guys to look at that have been, you know, improved, worked on, whatever. So these are constantly going to be changing a little bit, but there's not a whole lot of flexibility, even if you, even if we use a calendar that doesn't quite follow the calendar law, even if that's an option, it's, there's still not a whole lot of flexibility in there. It's just the amount of time we can start or end. So, uh, thank you guys for your time.
Mr. Chair, just one quick comment if you don't mind. I just wanted to recommend that you note on the calendar that doesn't comply with the calendar law, that it does comply with the calendar law. Because that's, I think, you know, there's, there's, uh, I'm not going to say there's an insignificant number of, you know, there are sixteen school districts in the state of Carolina right now who are operating not in compliance with calendar law. But I think it's important to be straightforward with the public to inform them to know, say, hey, please understand this option doesn't comply. I would also note one more thing, because you do have such a strong tourist, uh, community, that is one of the most vocal opponents to any changes to the calendar law. So, uh, just, it would not be, I would not be doing my job if I didn't raise those two points to you. So, thank you, boy.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you're next.
In case you can't tell from my voice. Yeah, no, I, I missed it. In case you haven't been able to discern by my voice, I do have a cold and I wouldn't blame that on the cold medicine I took this morning. So just real quick, just a quick rundown of some of the policies that are under review by our staff. So we've, uh, we're forming a few staff committees to look at a few of the policies that we have. For example, there's, we've already, the board and the, uh, the policy committee has already made changes to forty-three eighteen, use of personal electronic devices. We're going to start drafting out an R and P to accompany that so that we can have more of a policy-driven or process-driven procedure. So our principals and our assistant principals and teachers can, can follow that without having to guess and create their own. Policy thirty-four hundred and thirty-four R, those are under review as well from ISD. That is for the grading policy and students for at-risk of academic progress, or at-risk for lack of academic progress. Student services reviewing policies, forty-three, fifty-three, long-term suspension and forty-three, thirty-five criminal behavior. If you guys remember, we did criminal behavior as part of staff under Parents' Civil Rights. This is under students, just so you know. And then all the current policies that we have for Pender County Schools are being sent to the School Board Association for review so that we can get those uploaded correctly. Just a brief feedback, again, just information for you guys. Be glad to take any questions or anything that you guys have on those policies.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, talking about the grading policy, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I got a comment or question I'd like to.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Taylor, after speaking with some of the campus staff, I'm not going to identify those, but, uh, I would, uh, I would also challenge you to reach out to other, um, other counties, uh, within their super, probably maybe venture to the superintendent level to find out what, what their minimums are. I know the kids aren't allowed to make below a fifty, is that, is that true?
Way the, for secondary, the way that's written in, yes, that's correct. In current policy.
Um, without going into a lot of detail, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. Um, I don't know how other board members feel about it, but, uh, giving a kid a grade that isn't earned is, is, uh, in my opinion, setting, setting them up for failure. I'll stand firm on that and, and, um, I would ask that you find out if other school districts uphold that standard or, or do we need to be leading the charge specifically?
Yes, sir. We, we'll definitely take a look at that. Uh, we, we commonly do have that practice when we look at policies to look at what other districts are doing. Um, a lot of times when I'm working on something with Mr. McPherson, we'll share policies from different districts in our conversation. So we'll definitely take a look at that. Thank you for that piece of advice.
I think we. Yes, sir. You know, additionally, what I would say, Mr. Taylor, is, um, uh, given, given these kids something they haven't earned, um, is, is, in my opinion, not what right looks like. Um, you know, a child coming in writing their name on the paper and getting a fifty for it is, is beyond my understanding and, uh, I feel like we need to, we need to be a little transparent in that area, um, and, and not giving things to kids that, that aren't earned. I don't have anything else.
Yes, sir.
We, uh, then we had this come up a few years ago and there was a, I remember all this group of teachers came up with a plan and they came in front of us and I think we voted it down if I, it was a change that probably resulted in this.
I think this, I have to go back and.
It's been, it's been.
It's been years.
Seven years or more probably, but, uh.
I was, I was a principal then, I think, when it came up.
That's good. This probably, this needs reviewing, so.
Definitely. And ISD, uh, some of the concerns that you bring up, Mr. Springer, are the, um, are some of the main reasons why we're reviewing it. But we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that and, um, present those to the committee of the whole as they become available.
I should remember the teachers on the committee didn't really want to do it either and they were standing right where you are, looking at us, shaking their head no while they were explaining why they should do it. So that was it, right? We voted it down unanimously, I think, so, because a lot of the reasons that Mr. Springer talked about, so, right?
Okay.
I, I would, I would additionally challenge, challenge to understand where those teachers are coming from, uh, Mr. Chair. And, and additionally, or what I, next, what I would say is, uh, what, what factual basis are they going off of? Is, is what I would, what I would ask them to bring forward. Oh, they, it, it was basically, y'all come up with this plan my way, it was a previous They, they really didn't want it. They, it was pretty much in agreement with what you talked about, so, but we'll, uh, we'll talk about that at the meeting, I guess. This will be a, uh, what we have in our regular meeting about this? Will it be an information-type thing or will it be, you got, you got an action issue?
So it's, it's under, it's, all this is under information.
Information, yeah, I see it now.
Um, all this is under information at the moment and with the holidays coming up, I don't feel like we're going to have a policy draft ready for you guys by January COW, but probably February COW. Yeah.
It'll be.
In order for us to get input from all the stakeholders, it's going to take us a little bit of time.
We can get it in effect for next year, for next academic year, they're right.
Sure.
Good, good.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more questions for Mr. Taylor? Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Taylor, I got some other.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I got some other questions. I understand there was a, uh, a survey sent out to, uh, the schools about the climate culture, is that, is that my understanding?
Uh, you're talking about the mid-year teacher working condition survey? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am.
Yeah, that was sent out.
Have we, yep. So have you got any results on that yet?
Um, we have some results. Uh, we have asked for one last push. We were supposed to close the survey down Monday, um, this pa, this past Monday. We opened it up till the end of, uh, the working days in December and I'll be working on that over the break to be able to get you some information along with the schools. Right now, we have raw data.
Can they be, uh, so at this point, what, what is it, what is it looking like?
Without really taking a look at it in depth, I, I'd hate to even venture, I guess, at this point, to be honest with you. And I'm not trying to dodge your question. It may be, may, it's likely, there's some peaks and valleys, um, in the schools. Some schools may be outperforming last year, some schools may be underperforming last year. I just don't know the answer to that question without actually looking into it.
We did the mid-year check, uh, for the first time in order to allow our principals at then, right, to work on, number one, know what's going right and well and work on some things that may be not going as, uh, you know, that, that mid-year pulse check is always good, um, to kind of see where we are. We do that with our accountability, you know, with benchmark, uh, exams that we give and informative assessments. We felt the same thing with teacher working condition survey as well to help schools with that climate and culture, just kind of a, just a midway checkpoint. So, um, uh, looking at that data, we will certainly be able to provide the board once we, uh, put that in our spreadsheet and that, give you a, an idea of how things are going in our schools, climate and culture, um, once, once it shuts down here in December.
Yeah, and if you remember.
My worry about.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the school improvement plans of every school have a culture and climate goal, um, and that's another reason why we want to do this mid-year check.
So my worry about pushing this off is, um, is the morale of the teachers. You know, if, if they so choose not to, uh, for fear of repercussions or consequences they may have to serve for whatever reason, uh, due to their feedback or, uh, or emails or whatever, um, I'm, I'm opposing pushing this off, uh, till February or, or whenever it needs to be done. Because things, I feel like things are, you know, we're just keep kicking the can down the road and no accountability to getting, getting, uh, hailed. So I would challenge, I would challenge the staff to, to make this a priority and, and, uh, advise the board, uh, as soon as possible.
Yes, sir, it definitely will be. Um, just, and to kind of get into, not too much into the weeds or anything like that, but the teacher working condition survey is a Likert scale. Um, so one is least likely and five is most likely. It doesn't give us a lot of information other than the way a particular teacher or a group of teachers or a school feels overall. We utilize that information to be able to have school improvement teams go back and ask those questions. You know, this is a, you rated, as a whole, our school rated this particular standard very high. What have we done that has led us to that? How can we replicate that? How, how can we continue to do that? When we look at one of the questions and maybe the, maybe it's a two point three average, uh, which is below the, um, below the neutral stance, um, what can we do to improve that? So I don't, while one piece of that is always good to have, uh, the biggest component of this particular piece of, piece of information that we get is that it starts conversations within the building for continuous improvement. Um, so that's, that's what we'll be doing as soon as we get the data compiled. Uh, so that itself needs to be triangulated with some, um, not just quantitative but qualitative data as well from the schools and from the district. So I hope that answers your question, but yes, it's definitely a top priority. So I hope that answers your question, but yes, it's definitely a top priority.
Um, Mr. Taylor, are these, what are these, how are these questions worded for the survey? Does it help limit, well, I guess what I'm asking is, does it limit down to find out where the problem is, or how to rectify the problem?
Um, I think it gives us a good insight into, they're broken down by overall culture of the building, you know, do our teachers respected in the, in the, in the profession? Do teachers feel like they have ample time to complete their job, that they have ample resources? But, and the questions are taken from the standard teacher working condition survey that will be delivered in even years. So in twenty-twenty-four spring, the real teacher working condition survey from the state will be administered, which is another reason why they wanted this mid-year pulse check. But I think honestly, with, with the questions, the way they're written, you almost have to have some dialogue, some qualitative dialogue to be able to put action steps in place.
Okay, so, um, if, let's just say, let's just say, I'm going to use one school, I'm not going to name it the school. Let's just use one school as an example. You get all poor feedback toward a specific item. How long is that item going to take to be rectified? Is this going to be a whole, it's going to be a whole thing of, we've got to start doing some coaching, and we just keep kicking the can down the road, and, you know, on and on and on? And ultimately, the last people that suffer are the kids.
Right.
Sir, what would you do with that? Yeah, in that situation, you know, if it's something like that, and we'll do that across the board. We have mid-year, our mid-year principal meetings coming up, first of January. Hopefully, we will have that teacher working conditions mid-year back. But those are conversations that I would have with each principal as they come in and meeting with cabinet, is, you know, what are their highs, what are their lows, just on the accountability data, but the teacher working conditions. And allow that principal then develop that plan of action. I would really like all of our principals to be meeting with their site-based teams, and allow those teams to look at that data and develop action steps moving forward on anything that is, I would say, below the average in the district, and prioritizing, obviously, those elements that are, that are the most, need the most improvement versus those that need the least improvement.
So let's just say, in a school, you got a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I was just, I was just going to add in, I think it depends on, you know, the issue that, or the issue or the strength that's uncovered in terms of timeline. I mean, it may, if it's, you know, I can't give you a specific example off the top of my head, but, you know, it just, it depends on a lot of different factors, you know, in terms of timeline. I can tell you, we won't sleep on it. We'll get to, we'll get to moving as quick as we can to help make, make continuous improvements. And of course, all this is hypothetical, because we don't have any hard data yet, so...
So are we holding one-on-ones with the, one-on-ones with the teachers? Is anybody in the cabinet staff holding one-on-ones with the teachers?
No.
No, that would be, the school administration would be doing that. We hold one-on-ones with principals, with principals. Sometimes they bring their assistant principals there, but most of the time, it's just the principal and cabinet.
All right, without, I mean, I'm not trying to get too, too far into the weeds, but what, let's just say, one of the administrators was in the same room as a cabinet staff member, and it just so happened to be the administrator that's possibly the, the white elephant in the room or the problem. And they're not going to, they're not going to identify that problem for fear of retaliation. You know, you might have twenty-five, you might have two. Those two is the ones that matter, as well as those twenty-five. Because they're not, they're not solely connected, so they're not going to perform at their peak levels, in my opinion.
I think we spend quite a bit of time in schools as a cabinet, various members that supervise inside of our schools without administration walking with us. For example, I'll go into classrooms, and I will talk with teachers on a regular basis. And so, in the past, when those, any issues, those are the times that those teachers would speak with district administration at that, at that time. So I do feel confident that our teaching staff and our administrators, if there were any of those types of issues that there, there are plenty of times that they see myself, Mr. Taylor, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Taylor, that we all, Mike Taylor, that is, we all are in the schools every week, multiple times. So I hope that answers your question, Mr. Springer.
I, I mean, I'm glad to hear y'all are in the schools, and that's great, but, you know, there again, I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be the right setting for a teacher to come out and explain the problems for fear of, for fear of emotion getting in the way, especially in front of their, their students in the class. I'm understanding that there's been another resignation. There again, I'm not getting too far into the weeds, but it seems as if, as if, you know, speaking on a high level, as if there is a high level of turnover at a specific school, and I'm trying to, you know, I want what's best for the students first, but also the morale don't need to be crushed because of two or three individuals or a whole school because of one.
Yes, sir. I would never hold a conversation like that with a teacher inside of a classroom. I'd always set up a meeting outside of the school hours and speak with that teacher. I've done that in the past, and I'll continue to do that.
Okay. I don't have anything else. All right. Anyone else have any comments before we're finished? All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Dr. Breedlove, do you have anything before we go, or?
Yes, sir. This is our first run-through with the Committee of the Whole in this format, and it all went very well, and I appreciate it. Certainly, we'll be looking for feedback as we move forward, so thank you all very much.
All right. Ms. Burns, do you have anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cordero?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Springer?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right. Mr. Smith has made a motion. Mr. Cordero has seconded. All in favor, say aye. I don't, we do, okay. All right, well, we'll do a roll call then. Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Cordero?
Aye.
And Mr. Springer?
Aye.